Don't touch that thermostat.
I'd like to call the meeting to order if you'd stand for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone and welcome everyone watching at home tonight. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVor.
Present.
Trustee Gett. Trustee Kazam.
Present.
Trustee Goff.
Present.
Trustee Wigginton.
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Present.
All right, everyone here but one, so welcome everyone. We would be at item four, approval of the minutes from the Board of Trustees meeting. On May 17th, 2022, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion on the motion or questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. We would be at comments from the audience. If anyone would like to address the board tonight, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and try and keep your remarks under five minutes. Anyone here tonight to address the board? Go in once. Go in twice. Comments from the audience are closed. We would be at old business. Any old business coming for the board?
I just want to, want to update under old business, Mayor. The roof replacement for Firehouse Two is complete. It was done a few weeks ago. It looks great, so I just wanted to update the board that that has been done. So now we're going to move forward to working towards the fixing the interior. We have a few other issues, so.
All right, thank you. Before we go to new business, Madam Clerk, I forgot, there's no correspondence on the agenda. I rolled right past it, but you do have two pieces.
I do, just a moment. First, I have a thank you note from Val Bergia. It reads as follows. Mayor Michael Phelan, thank you to you and the Village Board on behalf of myself and my family for the unveiling of the honorary Roger Bergia Way sign on Glenn Avenue. It was a very nice get together. You have humbled and blessed his family. He would have been in awe. We are looking forward to seeing the other signs on Glenn as you move forward or move towards the school. A very special thank you to all of you, Val Bergia. Also, I have here a letter from the Board of Review of Assessments. I'm not going to read it all, but it is a letter letting the Village know and Mayor Phelan know that LSH Investments has protested their 2021 property tax board. The Property Tax Appeal Board did not find in favor of LSH. If you would like to read the full detail of the letter, please approach me. I will have that on file.
So normally those are not read, and I wanted the clerk to read that tonight mainly since the board was aware of that. People protesting property taxes is somewhat fairly routine, but this was unique in that this was an investment that took, this was a person that took public funds and they took TIF money and they turned around and protested the taxes on that. So thank, I talked to the Board of Review Chairman a little while ago. Thankfully, they did not agree to the appeal, but of course they have the right to appeal that to the Property Tax Appeals Board. Is that right, counsel?
That's right.
The state PTAB?
That's right.
But anyway.
That takes a long time.
I found it highly unusual and we won't ever enter into an agreement that permits anyone to do that again, but thanks again to the Board of Review for denying that. Okay, we would be at new business. Approval of Resolution 2022-03, a resolution approving agreement for design-build services for Tower Park Playground. Trustee Weisenberg had asked for a motion to approve.
Thanks, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution 2022-03, approving agreement for design-build services for Tower Park Playground.
All right, thank you. Second, please.
Second.
Back to you, Trustee Weisenberg, then we'll go to Wayne.
Thanks, Mayor. As we know, this is the Together We Play Accessible Playground upgrade that the students of St. Thomas have headed the last couple of years. We are finally getting close to build time. I know we've all been working on this for quite a while. I know Trustee Kazam helped with fundraising and the students at St. Thomas really worked their butts off getting us to this point, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Aldridge.
Thank you. Just, you know, give a little background on the project. So in, on May 3rd, we issued what we call a request for proposals for design-build services. So design-build is different than a straight out bid because we had some ideas what we wanted, but we really didn't have a design completed, so we knew exactly what we wanted. So this project is for design services well as then constructing the project, both. We received two responses from two separate contractors on May 26th, which was the due date. One from Vernon Jones, they're out of St. Louis, and one from Imagination. And Imagination is the firm that I think locally we were kind of working with to give us some conceptual designs. We assembled the selection committee. Matt Kaiser with St. Thomas School representing St. Thomas, Trustee Weisenberg, Trustee Kazam, and myself to review the proposals that we received. The, actually Burns and Jones submitted two separate proposals. One was around $200,000 and the other was around $330,000. So I didn't specify a price, although all the contractors asked for what our budget was, and we gave them the goal-setting budget, the fundraising goal of $125,000. So they weren't really restricted by funding and we didn't tell them to be restricted by funding. So that's what we got from Vernon Jones. Their proposal was very good, complete, and very nicely prepared. Imagination submitted a proposal for around $100,000. We had some questions for them primarily on the surfacing material type. It wasn't exactly what we expected, but I think they, on the other hand, were trying to stay under what our proposed budget was, so they were trying to respect that. But we went back to them and said, give us what you would put down as accessible material, you know, if the playground were yours. And so they came back with an additional amount and we allowed that in this case. Their proposed cost was the $153,775. So we did prepare a contract in your packet reflecting that for design services and build services. Just an important note, since this is still a design process, that price could legitimately go up and down a little bit. We may wish to cut something from the proposal or we may wish to add, in which case we would handle it as an extra work request. Depending on the size or the amount, we may come back to the board with that proposal. But at this point, the other question is scheduling. We'll need to get started pretty immediately on the design and confirm the equipment that we want for the playground and then so they can submit that order as soon as possible. There's probably about a three-month lead time at least right now for materials. So if we can get those materials ordered soon, we may be able to get this done yet this year. That's, that's been the fear all along, is the material shortages and shipping and things like that. We hope that we can get those materials ordered as soon as possible, so we can get this done as soon as possible. Couple of outstanding items. One is the arrangement we have with Advocates for Access. They've been taking the donation and pledges, so there will have to be some sort of arrangement to get that money, those revenues into the village's coffers and use that as an offsetting revenue for the project. And Trustee Kazam, I believe, has some information on that. And I think that's it. I think it's, it's just, we're very happy with this proposal and happy with the contractor. They've done a lot of local work before. They're out of West Chester, Illinois, and our, we have a local representative out of Morton, Illinois that's working with us on this project in the conceptual phase.
Thank you, Mr. Aldridge, and I want to thank Trustee Weisenberg for, you were the point person from the beginning, and also Trustee Kazam, as I look to you, thank you for spearheading the fundraising. I'm curious if you could tell us where we are in the fundraising so we can have a ballpark of what our costs are going to be.
Yes, absolutely. So you may remember when we were approached, not originally, but in the last few months with, by Mr. Kaiser, he had projected that the cost of this playground would be $125,000. You know, as often happens, and particularly in this climate, the cost is more. At that time, we were, just to remind everyone, I think, prepared to pay the $80,000 to make this park happen. We were able to fundraise with very generous donations from the Gilmore Foundation for $25,000 plus a $16,000 matching contribution, and then also Mr. and Mrs. Steve Fisher with Spotted Cow and Joe's Italian for $20,000, and the Miles Houter Foundation, who had already pledged $20,000, has upped their pledge with another five, additional $5,000. We were, in order to get that $16,000 matching contribution by the Gilmore Foundation, we needed to get that last 16K. I don't have an exact number for the board, but we are very close to that. But what we need to keep in mind is that now the cost of this project is even more than the $125,000. So I just want to, I mean, I think we all still have the same sentiment, but there, we can, my personal feeling is that we should say, you know, we will pay for whatever the remainder is of the playground, but continue to fundraise, and whatever we can fundraise is added benefit.
So to be clear, if, if we get that matching 16, we should be right around $125,000 that we have raised, that has been raised by St. Thomas?
First by St. Thomas and then by our efforts, yes.
Okay.
But now our bid is, of course, higher than that.
At $150,000. But we said we were going to pay some of it anyway. Right? So now we're only paying $25,000 instead of?
Eighty-five.
I think it was eighty or ninety.
Eighty, right, yeah.
It's much lower than we anticipated, so yeah, that's true.
And remind me which part of the budget that's coming out of, that we budgeted that for?
Capital.
Capital.
It was under capital.
Yep. My question for Mr. Aldridge was, to get this ball rolling, Wayne, how much, what percentage do we need down to get everything ordered?
The contract is set up with 50% down, just really so they can get the materials ordered.
Sure, okay, thank you.
And the increase of cost, if I could just explain that real quickly, the original surfacing that was quoted was mulch. And as you can imagine, this is supposed to be a universally accessible playground. We'll try getting on the equipment with a wheelchair through mulch would be impossible.
Yeah.
So we went back to them to get some kind of plastic. It's permeable, isn't it?
Yeah, this, this is a, hard to describe. It's, it's like a rubberized material. It's called Ventura Tech, and it's porous, so it drains. So it'll be a draining kind of a plastic rubberized material.
Also, I'm sure less upkeep than mulch, too.
Yes, certainly, yeah.
Anyone else?
So as far as the funds are concerned now, we're at one, we're closing on that 120.
Now, the only question I had is, you know, when these things were going in to access
for, or?
Advocates for Access, yeah.
That was a 501, the whole, it was a 501(c)(3). So how, what's the dynamic to get that money from 501(c)(3) to this? Are they going to cut a check? How does, how does that work?
I suspect they're going to want to directly pay. I don't know. We're going to enter a contract with the contractor, and I don't, from the village's perspective, I don't think it matters if they cut the check directly to the contractor or if they pay the village.
So as the contract says now, I mean, and I, I've worked with them, I, I know that Advocates for Access will be good, but as the contract says now, we are on the hook with this.
If we sign this contract, we're committing our commitments to pay the $150,000.
Correct. Okay.
So the question is, what kind of commitment does Advocates for Access add to the village?
That's a good question, Mark.
And I can't answer it as I sit here.
Right. So this, so right now, if we, if we approve this tonight, we are, we are dedicating $150 some odd thousand dollars to this project, and I'm sure it'll come through. I don't have a doubt in my mind, but I'm asking this question because maybe I do. So, you know, that's, I think that we just have to keep that in mind, what, what this is. And it's a great project. I'm a bucket of 100%, but I just want you to know that as the contract reads now, we are on the hook for $150,000.
That's a really good question, and I'm sorry that I don't have the answer for you for that. This partnership was something that St. Thomas had set up through their Together We Play initiative, and like you, I'm 100% behind it.
Right.
And I fully believe that they're going to pay the bills, but it is a very valid question to see how the funds get from their account to the play.
To this project.
Yeah.
Would it be prudent to approach them first before we approve this, just to get a better?
I was going to suggest approval conditioned upon satisfactory written commitment from the 501(c)(3) to pay the village. Once we get that, then we would deliver the contract to the contractor, so that it wouldn't need to come back to the board.
I think that's a good decision because it'll be another two weeks from now, so we can get this.
So the motion would be to approve the resolution that approves the contract, subject to the condition that before we deliver the signed contract to the contractor, we first receive written confirmation from, is it a foundation?
It's a non, not, not profit, yeah.
Whatever the 501(c)(3) nonprofit is, a written, you know, obligation to reimburse the village or directly pay the contractor.
Well, so obviously they have an attorney who serves them. They're probably trustees, so we don't know if they meet quarterly or monthly. Is this, you're, I mean, you could be holding this up significantly. If they don't, if they only meet quarterly and they need board approval for something like this?
That's true. So that's a decision the board has to make. I was just trying to come up with a way that we could approve this and pay. Otherwise, if you approve it, we're obligating the village to pay the $153,000.
I personally am in favor of your suggestion, Mark. I mean, I think we're, you know, this is subjective. We don't know. They could be meeting, we could have this answer tomorrow, so.
My understanding was they were holding the money so that the donors had the tax benefits of the 501(c).
Yes.
And that when the project was done, they were going to basically donate the money to the village of PRA Heights.
I don't know if they can legally give it to us directly. They have to pay for the equipment directly.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know. As, as making it tax, for the tax reasons, I think that they would probably want to pay for the equipment, not give it to a government.
As long as the paper trail is that you're, you're using the funds for an exempt purpose and play off, it would be, it's going to be up to them either way, as to whether they want to write the check to us or to the contractor. So without knowing the answer to that question, all I can tell you is approving this resolution with no conditions would be obligating the village to pay 100% of the contract fees. But again, with the condition, I, I would be hard pressed to think that it would take them a long time. For that, they've been fundraising for this project, so it's already in fact implicitly approved and not expressly approved, so I wouldn't think that formal approval would take much of the time, but I can't promise that.
Anyone else?
I was just going to add, from my, from my opinion, from a, you know, contract management or standpoint, 50%, you know, you order the equipment, you know, do you continue with the contract? Maybe the 50% is the risk and not the entire contract.
Well, that's a good point. The $80,000, you know, plus, we were ready to commit. I personally would like to make a motion to change this and change it, I'm sorry, you're going to have to help me with the wording, Mark, or counsel.
Yeah, you need to make an amendment.
I'm, pardon me. I'd like to make an amendment to this motion to make this contingent upon the fact that they will pay. I apologize, I need your help here.
You want a written commitment on their part to reimburse the village or directly pay the contractor the amount that they raised in their fundraising effort?
Correct, that's right.
Second.
All right, any discussion on the amendment? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
All right, I'm going to reread the amendment, Attorney Walton, make sure I get it correct. Trustee Kazam has made an amendment to the motion to require a written commitment on behalf of Advocates for Access to reimburse the village or the contractor based on their fundraising efforts.
Correct.
Trustee DeVor.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Goff.
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
All right, the amendment passes. Back to the main motion as amended. Madam Clerk?
Trustee DeVor.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Goff.
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
All right, that passes. We would be at discussion of possible ordinances regulating RVs and pods. Trustee Wigginton?
That's a very open-ended question, so thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I know that there are a few, maybe one trustee who's interested in this, maybe a few, but this very issue has come up at some of the neighborhood watch meetings regarding RVs. I've had some members of the public approach me on the pods or pack rat or whatever. You see these things that just hang out and, you know, they, they never go anywhere. They just are being utilized maybe as a garage or storage right there in the driveway or in the front yard. RVs, we have some things on RVs already, but I know that, you know, some of our residents have seen people maybe utilizing RVs in a manner, you know, where they're not necessarily hooked up to water or sewer and are being actively used as residents despite that. So I would love to hear from the board what, what people have on this topic, if they've spoken to their constituents about this and where we go from here. Chief, I don't know if you want to add anything right now or circle back to you.
I can't. I can just briefly touch on what we currently have on RVs. Obviously, they have to be operational, they have to be valid. They cannot be in the front yard, they can be on a hard surface in the front of the residence. If they're parked on the street, they have to be moved every 48 hours, and they cannot be used as a residence. So that's what we currently have on the RVs. The pods, we have nothing regulating long-term storage. I think this is slowly becoming a bigger problem for the village. I know that my complaints have increased. There are some properties that are using it for, that have had them for well over a year, using them for a garage. I think that we really do need to have something regulating long-term storage. So that is, this is an item that I had put on there. I know we discussed it, Trustee Wigginton, but we're starting getting quite a few of those in the village, and if you live by one, I'm sure you can see it because it's sitting right on the driveway. So I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
And Chief, as far as the, the 48 hours on the street, on that regulation, I think they can get permission from the chief of police if they need to have it longer than that. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So they have an avenue if they need it longer to ask for permission?
Yes, as long as it's not abused. If someone's going to be there and they're a little bit longer, we don't expect them to, you know, pull it back and forth every 48 hours. We'll work with them, but I think that this is targeting more of the long-term storage, I think. I'm not, I don't think that, at least my complaints have not been, you know, the short-term visitors. I think that we're, this is about long-term storage, like maybe in the off-season or? Right, yep.
And maybe as another question to you, Chief. So with the RVs on the 48 hours, has that been sufficient for the RVs? I mean, have there been a mass amount of people coming to you to ask for longer than 48 hours on the RVs being parked on the street?
No, I have not received any.
Okay.
So people are using these as garages or something like that, basically? Is that what you're suggesting?
The, the pods seemingly, in, in some neighborhoods, and there are people that have had these pods for many months.
One, okay.
Perhaps longer.
I would ask counsel to draft up an ordinance regulating long-term storage and also put in there that for some reason, if, whether it be moving, they need a little bit extra time, just like anything else, they can request it from the village ahead of time and we can work with them. But I do think we need some kind of a window of when those are dropped off and when they're pulled out, but we can, we can work with them, some kind of a stipulation. That's what I would recommend. But we have to have something on the books because people are just using these for garages, extra storage, and we've had a lot of complaints of people selling fireworks out of some of them. I mean, I can keep talking about this.
Wait a minute.
It's cheaper to build a storage shed.
Right, yeah.
And it's less, you don't have to go to zoning. You could just?
Right. There's a couple of different days. Adults, as you won't be surprised to hear, in other communities, you're not the only community that has this problem. There's two different ways to address it. With regard to storage facilities, you can require that those be in the backyard, side or backyard, and that they have some form of foundation. The other thing is with the pods, anything temporarily movable that's not intended to be a permanent addition to your property, that those be limited to seven days, 14 days. I wouldn't go any longer than that.
Well, well, I think that, I mean, I'm not even opposed to, I mean, some of them, some people have them dropped off before they close and move on the house, so, you know, I know that there is even a month or maybe even two months, I think, with the portable storage.
Right, right.
I think that, I want to be fair to that. I know how, you know, moving is, you know, that's, it's a marathon, and I, I know some people like to start packing those early, but I wouldn't want to limit those to just seven days. I think that giving them a little bit more timeframe, you know, to get them packed and?
That's, that's the thing, it's balancing, you know? How long is too long?
Yeah.
So that, that would be the decision. The drafting the ordinance is easy, plugging in the number is the hard part.
Well, let me stop there and ask, is there anyone opposed to having a council draft an ordinance with pods? Bring it back.
No, but I have a few comments, Mayor. So thanks for putting this on the agenda, Chief. As you know, I recently spoke to you about this. The RV ordinance, as I understand it, we had an ordinance at some point that was lost due to a clerical error, that the RVs had to sit behind the building line. Is that correct?
Yeah, going back years ago, when we first established this ordinance on parking in the front yard, that was a part of it. It was a subsection of that ordinance and was not codified when we had all those ordinance brought over and codified. There were a lot of ordinances that were not brought over at the time. We went back and tried to find it. It doesn't exist. I do know that at the time, I remember talking to the board about it, that it had, there was, had to be, you know, in the backyard or past the front of the house.
Right.
But as of right now, we, we have no ordinance regulating that.
I think we need to move to restore that now because?
And I've looked for that. I, I asked Sarah to pull the old things and it's not there. I, I asked her to pull the old books, the actual reg, or the code book, and it's simply not there. I don't know where it is, I don't know what it was, but it's, it's not there.
And looking, sorry, sorry, Trustee DeVor. And looking at, I did a little research since we spoke last, Chief. I've probably looked at ordinances, probably around 40 different towns. They all had ordinances on the books regarding the pods. Some require a permit, which I'm not necessarily in favor of, but they all had a duration of how long these things could sit in your yard. Some limited it to 30 days. I think the max I saw was 60. I don't, and one of the ones on, by where I live, the guy has an extension cord going into it. So why would you need an extension cord going into a storage unit unless it was being used for more than a storage unit? So they look like trash. No other towns around us, as far as I can tell, allow people just to plop those in the driveway and keep them there forever, and I don't think we should allow it as well either.
I think we're all in agreement that that, we should have something on the books. So counsel, if you could, thank you very much.
All right, we're through that now, RVs. So under the, the old ordinance that was never codified, did that include campers and boats, or are we just talking RVs tonight? Or trailer?
I believe, well, we're just discussing RVs, but it's a good point, Mayor. If, if we're going to start doing that, those are also other? If, if we're going to start doing that, those are also other issues I think we're going to have to tackle because people do keep boats covered up in the front, covered.
Yeah, we went over this before. Like, some people were on board with restricting that. But this was a problem before. But we can't just live, if you do this, if we do this for RVs, we can't just do it for RVs. It has to be travel trailers and it has to include boats because those are causing just as much violation and like eyesore as what the RVs are.
So if I can comment, the disagreement last time regarding that was that we were going to try to pass an ordinance that prevented them from having them regardless. They couldn't put them on gravel. They couldn't put them on their driveways. The ordinance that I'm speaking of is that they just have to have them behind the house, not in the front yard, essentially. That wasn't something we discussed last time. We said they couldn't put it on gravel.
I feel like we were saying, I don't mean to interrupt you, but they had to be on concrete.
Right, correct.
Some of it's paved.
Right.
It's paved surface.
Right. So my, what I brought the concern up was if the resident only had a gravel driveway, even if they set it back behind their house, they still couldn't have their boat. That's what I was opposed to. I don't think it's unreasonable to expect someone to set this equipment behind the front line of their house.
The problem that we may run into, and this was a zoning thing that came up all the time, is front yards. What are, what is a front yard? People don't have front yards. Is front yard on a corner lot? You know, I mean, we start now getting, because I'm, I'm thinking of, I have one particular house in mind when I'm saying all of this, too, that there are people that don't necessarily have your classic front and backyard that are going to struggle to find a place for their RV that they have currently when we pass something on that. So, I mean, we may have to, may have to set aside a corner lot. We may have to define that again. But I'm sure there's a solution. It would just have to, it's, it's tough defining what front yard is. I mean, it's, you know, I've run into this all the time.
So then are we okay if it's behind the house line, that it sits on grass?
I sort of am. I mean.
I mean, it's something.
I mean, if they put it in their backyard, it's going to be on grass.
It's not visible from the road. Yeah, but what about the neighbors that live behind you, right? So now we've taken it from the road for the people that live across the street from you. We now tell them it has to be behind the house line. They park it in the middle of their backyard. Now the people who are trying to enjoy their backyard who don't, you know, can't see down, they have to look into it from the other side. So you're, you're solving one problem but creating another.
Typically, people in their backyards can put up privacy fences if they don't like what they see around their neighbors. Looking through the ordinances of Dunlap, Metamora, Germantown Hills, they all have the ordinance that say that the RV has to be behind the, the building line. So this isn't unprecedented. It's not like we're doing something that other towns have.
I mean, I'm 100% on board for that, 100%. I'm just trying to look at it in all different ways. Like, are we saying that it can just be in the grass? Like, that's just another portion of it. But I am not opposed to saying it has to be behind the house line.
I have another perspective on that. Walk right up here on Highland Avenue. Houses are all Highland addresses. They have no backyards. The backyards, in some cases, are as wide as this area here. My dad's house, where I grew up, was in that situation. And he kept a camper parked on concrete in front of his house. He has no side yard and no backyard. What do you do then? And there's, it's not just his house. There's several on Highland that would fall into that.
There, currently, the, on the regs, there is a, the only thing that was carried over, it's very weird how that, the one in particular with regulating RVs and things, it says, it's, everything is pertinent. Then there's one thing that says, if you want to add any pavement to your property, you have to get permission from the chief of police or the administrator. So that is currently as the regulation reads now. Everything is pertinent up until that, and then it just randomly goes, says that. So that's, that's how the code says now. So if you add a driveway to your thing and you didn't ask permission, you've broken the law.
Would you normally have to seek zoning to add a parking lot or?
No, not zoning.
No.
Well, what I'd like to do tonight, this is a good discussion. Just like to find out if there are a majority of you that would like to have council prepare something on boats, RVs, et cetera. If, if there's a majority of you, we'll have him do that. And that'll be the starting point. If, if there's not enough support tonight, we'll just have him do the pod. So is there anyone opposed to having council start a draft ordinance that would include RVs, boats, et cetera? Anyone opposed? All right, counsel, we'll let you work on that and we'll put that on our agenda in the future when we plan on being here a while.
Absolutely.
And in the meantime, any of you have strong feelings about this, please let the administrator know on what we just discussed. Not on the agenda, but any committee, any committees have anything you want to report on before we go to miscellaneous?
I would like to report on something, Mayor, briefly. And I don't have all of the information right now. But I recently attended our most recent meeting of REDCO, which you'll remember is a Riverview Economic Development Coalition. Over, we started this initiative prior to COVID, and the initiative was to market the region, so the small communities in our area, to the state and the country in a way that would promote economic tourism, agricultural tourism, and other forms of tourism. It has been incredibly successful. And in the first two years, we were the lucky beneficiaries of the KDB group and Kim Blickenstaff to have our dues paid by them to Scenic Byways, which was very generous. Now they have stopped doing that after two years. And we will be probably paying our own dues to Scenic Byways, which I think, you know, I'll send you all emails on this, what that benefit is to us.
That's 2,000.
Yeah, it's under, it's actually under 2,000. It's like $1,600. But the person spearheading this, Roy Bockler, has stepped down. And so in the coming weeks, I will be sending out more information about this initiative and then thoughts that my fellow trustees have about paying dues or not paying dues and initiatives and that type of thing.
Anyone else have anything you want to report on real quick?
Public Works, they took delivery of the street sweeper. And that was last Thursday. We're also having a valve exercising trailer put together. It's now built. They're waiting for a motor to put on it. That'll be a benefit to our system. The spray patching has been completed, as I'm sure many of us have seen. They were actually able to work in a couple of extra areas, including Glen Avenue. And the loose gravel that we see will be swept up after it has a chance to work in to the pavement. And Mauer Stutz delivered the Lake Street water main replacement plans and IEPA forms on Friday. So that process is moving forward as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Trustee Goff. Anyone else?
Just real quickly on public safety. Not really a public safety issue, but the fire department, along with the American Legion this past weekend, did a proper disposal of American flags here. So compliments to the fire department as well as our tenant, the American Legion.
Thank you.
Is this just committee reports or is this also miscellaneous business? Is it both?
It, it is a little both. Yeah, I just wanted, it wasn't on the agenda to, to let any committee chairs report on anything, but I thought it'd be a good time to do it. So we're, we're at miscellaneous.
Okay. Chief, do you have an update on the 714 Marietta sidewalk repair? Has that started? I thought it was supposed to start.
I believe the date was today?
Yes, it was supposed to start today.
Okay.
But they were behind on whether that's supposed to take place on Thursday.
Okay, I've gotten calls. Because I told people it was happening today and they're like, they're not here. I was like, oh, I'll find out. So, I know, I know. So Thursday is when it's rescheduled?
That's when it's supposed to take place, yeah.
Okay.
Wayne, is there anything you wanted to update the board on of what you're working on?
Just a couple of grants.